Good evening and welcome to tonight's special city council meeting where we would be discussing the 2018 proposed budget. This meeting is for Monday, August 21, 2017. We'll now go to a roll call and determination of quorum.
Here.
Laurenti. Armstrong.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Modrick.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you ma'am. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. We're continuing on from our series of budget hearings. The first item on tonight's agenda for the budget hearing is a discussion of reallocation of sales tax as proposed by Mayor Allender. And the floor is open if anybody wants to begin. And we're off. We will now go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you'd prefer, we could have a five-minute silent break here. No, I'm kidding. So, I was waiting for someone else to buzz in on this. In looking at what the mayor presented for the reallocation of the sales tax, it kind of, since it affects the general fund and the CIP fund and the Vision Fund, I would have some other questions as far as like the reallocation of the interdepartmental charges as far as that goes too. So, I'm not necessarily sure how much we want to get into it tonight because it would be, from what I understand, it's going to be an ordinance change, which means we're not going to handle it tonight. And I believe we asked this question of the mayor already, we don't have to have the ordinance changed to pass this budget. If we are going to use the reallocation of the sales tax according to when I think I posed this question to our city attorney, Joel Landine, we just have to have the reallocation or decision made before the start of 2018. If we don't go down that road and we pass this budget, then we would have to re-identify our revenue source. Pauline, do you want to weigh in? Is that correct as far as you know? I see the city attorney's not here tonight, but...
He's here, but he's in his office working on some other stuff. Correct. My understanding is we do not have to pass it simultaneously. However, if it does not pass as the reallocation, we will have to revisit the budget after the fact.
And just identify revenue sources or...
Correct. Either identify revenue sources to replace what was originally budgeted from that reallocation or look at expenditures in ways in which we could make additional cuts.
So, again, I would welcome to hear, I mean, I don't know how much of a discussion we want to get into this or if we want to have a working session on it separate to get a council's feel for it. I mean, the mayor presented it, but I don't know if the rest of us really had an opportunity to dig into it and look at it and consider that discussion of how it's going to affect all three of those funds and what each of us views that those funds should be used for. So, I would welcome any comment from my colleagues as far as what they're thinking. If they're all on board, maybe we could already direct staff tonight to go ahead and bring something back. So, yes, Alderman Laurenti, I see you're in the queue and I will be quiet now and hear what you have to say. Thank you.
I agree. And I would just encourage, before I go to Alderman Laurenti, I would encourage that this is a time to discuss it. So, if you have thoughts about it and the mayor is right here, ready to answer questions, it would be okay to get those questions out there. But that would go to Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Alderwoman Scott, for that opportunity. But you didn't have to cut yourself short.
I'll come back.
All right. Very good. If you would, Chair, I'd like to ask Finance Officer a question if I can. I'm hoping she would have just off the top of her mind, but I'm setting you up, as you can hear.
Go for it.
The health, if you will, what's the, this last year's income into the Vision Fund? What was the total dollars?
It's usually about half of which is, that goes into the general fund. So, it was around $12 million, 12.4, 12.7, I would say. I can look it up if you give me just a minute.
Yeah. No, if you can, that's fine. If you want to come back in, that would be great. I assumed it was somewhere around 13 million just for Vision Fund and a little over 26, I thought, for the total for Vision in CIP.
12.4.
And the reason I wanted to...
Sorry. It was 12.4 million in 2016.
12.4. See, you were right on the money. I appreciate that. I knew you would know. The reason I wanted to start there is because it's a very healthy fund. I believe we're operating on cash. In fact, we're sitting and waiting to decide what we're going to do with some of the funds in consideration of the Civic Center. And I think we all can agree, at least for those that have been here for a few years, that we need to do something with the Civic Center. To what level, you know, we need to make that decision this year as well. But in my opinion, I believe the mayor is on the right track. I would support something today that real allocates these funds, but I would try for, and hopefully I would get my colleagues to support, an even greater expenditure for streets and sewers out of the Vision Fund. Nothing more important for the vision of our city than its, the health of its infrastructure. We all campaign on it all the time. We all say it every time we run for office, how important streets are, how important all of these infrastructure things are. But the reality is, there hasn't been a lot of traction. Some of us have tried recently, in fact, to do exactly what the mayor is doing now, which, and I think we were being much more aggressive, Mr. Roberts and I were trying through legal and finance, and it got tabled, not even a discussion. And lo and behold, here we are with the mayor doing it. And I appreciate that and I think it's a beginning conversation. And I think we need to get very serious by increasing that portion that's going to be reallocated to streets and sewers. We need capital improvement spending bigger than life. We all know this. We had a study done and the numbers provided. I can't remember how far behind we are on infrastructure spending, but most of you remember, it's in the millions. I mean, it's like eight, nine million or something like that per year. I can't even remember what the figure was. 12? 25. Let me take that back. See, I'm not even close when I'm ballparking. So, $25 million. And we're looking at what? We're looking at an additional 1.1 million out of the Vision Funds into the CIP. We've got to do better than that. I don't know what figure it needs to be, but we're getting nowhere near where we need to be. I asked some leading questions the other night, if you all remember, at the last budget hearing of Public Works, Dale Tech, about the capacity for the city to be able to do more than even if we, you know, took this. Would we be able to handle that? Would we be able to spend all of that in capital improvement projects? And he said, yes, absolutely. And we could do more. So, we have the capacity today. If you remember, he said that he knows the private market, the ones who will do the construction for our capital improvement projects, have the capacity today to do more. So, we need to take advantage of that now. These are good-paying jobs. These are high-paying jobs, in fact, very high-paying jobs compared to the average retail job. So, not only will it be something that we should be, have been doing decades ago, but it will be something that will add to the economy because we're going, these people, if they hire additional people to do more of the projects, they're going to be spending more of that income here in Rapid City. Not only the current employees, but the employees that are grown through the fact that we are increasing the amount of capital improvement projects that we're doing here in the city. So, it's, it comes right back to us, in fact. It comes back to us in sales tax. It comes back to us in people buying homes and paying property taxes. So, we have to think about that and I believe we need to get very serious. We need to start backing up what we say in our campaigns and do that now. I think it's a great time to take advantage of it now. I think most of us would agree this reallocation is an extremely positive thing. It's a matter of what level. I yield.
Thank you. And I'll go to Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess discussing the cuts, I have no problem with the mayor actually doing away with the .16 fund. I think he's correcting that it was never used as it should have been designed, was designed to be used. I just think that the Vision Fund is the one thing the citizens of Rapid City have spoken quite loudly on a couple of times, that they want protected and they want to be used. And I think that to decrease it by 2% is just kind of a, almost a, I don't know, it just doesn't seem right to me. I'm all for increasing the CIP, you know, the 10%, and just keeping the extra 2% back in the Vision because that's something the citizens said they wanted. And I think when we talk about, you know, campaigns, well, we all talked about affordable housing, but we've yet to vote for that project that's coming for us a couple of times now. The $25 million, as I understand it, is a subjective number, comes from a person that used to take my spot. I respect him as an engineer. He knows a lot about things, but I'm not sure that he had a really good grasp on that number. And it was based upon a study that was talking about the difference in fair and good roads. And I know the mayor did a ride along, did those studies and, you know, said some things that weren't popular in the press, but they're the right thing to say as far as the conditions of our roads and the way that, you know, they're taken care of. I think we actually do a pretty decent job of taking care of our roads. I think it's easy to say we need $25 million a year or more and everybody hatches on that and the public freaks out and thinks we're not doing our job. But the reality is, it's, I think it's not really as high as that. I'm all for putting more money in the streets, don't get me wrong. I know there's some real issues with the streets out there, but I think the Vision Fund is something that, once again, the public has said on more than one occasion that they want to keep. It was voted back in and it's gone to some really good projects and I think that we need to respect that as far as that goes. And plus, we don't know what the Civic Center is going to be for sure. I mean, I trust that we're going to probably come in the numbers or say we are, but still we need to keep a little bit of a buffer there. And I think that extra 2% helps ensure that that project goes forward, whatever we need to do, at least until we get an answer if we're going to do something new. And, yeah, I guess that's just my, my point with that is just, I'm not sure I'm buying the whole $25 million extra for infrastructure. I think it's not a bad idea to increase that money number, but $25 million is a lot of money. And you talk about trying to drive around this town right now with all the construction going on. You wait till we drop another $25 million into the streets, just think about that too. And that's all I have to say about next.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilwoman Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I have a nice balanced agreement with what's been said already because I believe in what the mayor is doing with the reallocation opportunity here. This is a great opportunity to kick in and begin the process of looking at increasing our CIP. I'm really happy to see the utility support be incorporated into the CIP. I think that's something, having sat on utility support, I felt during the commission meetings or the committee meetings this year that that's where it needed to be. So, I think that's a great improvement in our budget. General Fund, we know it also is looking for an increase, although if it's going into the general fund, are we really balancing where we need to go with our capital improvements? Are we getting our capital improvements up more than we need, as much as we need to in this first year? I think once we get this allocation started, reallocation started, then it will be the allocation and we have an opportunity to watch this grow over the next several council seasons. Vision Fund, Vision Fund is exactly that. That's the people's vision. That is why they've got that tax in there, why they've held strong to it. It hasn't been recalled. And I believe that it's there for a purpose, not just for roads, not just to be put into the CIP and absorbed by the improvements or equipment. I think it has a future built into it, which is why it is Vision. And I think we do need to look at, is that an important place to decrease and let that flow into the general fund? I'm not satisfied yet that that's the place to go with general fund is to move that Vision Fund into that. But I do believe in where we're at or where we're going with the CIP, with the increase of it. And I think there's still some room for improvement in here, but we should protect that of which the citizens want and Vision is their Vision Funds. And that's one thing that they haven't recalled, so we should protect that at all costs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll now go to Councilwoman Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regards to the Vision Funds, in looking at this plan, since it's only for 2018 and we're not looking down the road any further, I think I might be able to support this. However, as Lisa said, excuse me, Councilwoman Modrick said, this is something that's been approved by the city of Rapid City for many years. We preserved it because after the flood, penny sales tax was added to build the Civic Center, then people voted on it to keep it in, to improve the city. And I am all for streets. Don't get me wrong, but I have never run on infrastructure, never, because I know that we're going to get them taken care of. You know, it just takes time. And to say it's $250 million, that's a catastrophic number. It doesn't mean anything, really. We've got to get down to the bare bones here. So, you know, when we look at the Vision Fund, I can probably support this, but I, and we get great stuff out of our Vision Funds. I really support the arts and culture. It brings back $4 for every dollar spent on the arts in this town. I don't know what roads make us. I really don't. No one has ever said to me, I moved here because I really like the roads or I really want to be in a better place with better roads. As long as we have free thaw cycles, we will never have pristine roads. We will never have roads like they have in Phoenix. We just won't. So, we can work on that. We can harp on that. We can take money away from the arts and culture for that, but they're never going to be perfect. They're just never going to be. So, I just have to say that, you know, if people are thinking about moving here, they might come here because we have an extremely wonderful quality of life here with our arts and culture and the way that we take care of our citizens. I just don't think they're going to come here for the roads. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll go to Councilwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to put some numbers to what we're considering, in 2016, the total general fund, and I'm using round numbers just to show increases and decreases, but in 2016, the general fund had roughly $27 million as a revenue stream. The, that meant that the Vision Fund was 13.5 and the CIP Fund was 13.5. With the increase in 2018 that the mayor was proposing, and I'm using his figure of 28.4 to do the math, that a full penny would be the 28.4 would go into the general fund and that would leave the CIP Fund or increase the CIP Fund to 16.5. That would have the Vision Fund at 11.9, almost 12 million, so really just a reduction of, you know, 1.5 million dollars. So, just wanted to put some numbers out there so everybody could see, you know, it's not that drastic. But I do know in the past, as far as talking about infrastructure or increase in the CIP, as Alderman Laurenti said, he asked Mr. Dale Tech, you know, if Mr. Dale Tech thought our private construction companies could go ahead and pick up on that, you know? And if I heard him correct, if you guys heard the same thing I did, he said, yes, the extra work could be absorbed. They would ramp up for it, so it would have to be planned over a long period of time because they're not going to ramp up for it if it's not a continuing revenue source for improvement of infrastructure. But I also know that some of the council members in our other working sessions and in small group discussions, whenever we talk about increase in the CIP, there was some discussion about, well, do you just throw money into the CIP and let the department directors continue with the expansion of Rapid City? Or do you shift this money but put some earmarks on it, like it can only be used to rehabilitate some of our older sections of town so that we kind of get that cross-section of getting older sections of town, the infrastructure upgraded with this shift of money, continuing with whatever projects the department directors and the public works departments and the engineers come up with for the regular CIP, but put some type of direction that, that's fine, but whenever you talk about growth, especially if you're going to talk about controlled growth, you usually bl- out and then you have to take time to absorb all of that new area with that infrastructure and get the properties developed and then that's when you concentrate on infill. So, I know the mayor has talked about in the past too, you know, that staff is working on new TIF guidelines to try to take a look at, see if that could be used as an incentive for some of that infill. We haven't seen that yet. So, I think that's a work still in progress that's still supposed to be coming to us. And until that actually comes through and gets approved, our TIF guidelines are still as they always have been, which means a lot of the, you know, developers are looking at that expansion or that outs, outer edge market rather than looking inside. We have had a few infill projects, you know, downtown, in the downtown area, there've been some rehabilitation and some redevelopment and that's great because the infrastructure's already there. So, it would be nice if we could come up with some type of incentive. And I'm kind of looking for the TIF policy to do that, but I'm just bringing up this part because if the city council's going to go down this road, I would be much in favor or I would be more favorable in supporting this reallocation if we actually put some direction on it of, it can't be used for expanding outside our city limits any longer. Let's take a breathing room and get some of our older sections or some of our older streets, at least, you know, sometimes you have to put a Band-Aid, Band-Aid on something before you can make the major repair. And I know we've had a lot of broken water mains lately that ends up with street repairs and then everybody questions, well, when is that going to be tore up? Well, not for five years. So, we've got a big Band-Aid on it rather than almost maybe kind of scheduling out some controlled Band-Aids. So, again, I will go ahead and be quiet now since I brought up another point because I see another Alderman in the queue. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Scott. You know, before I go to Alderman Nordstrom, a couple of comments. I agree with infill development being a priority versus expansion, so I like that. But one thing I wanted to point out was the utility support actually does provide for infrastructure needs as well. So, if you add .16 utility support funding, .46 CIP funding, that's actually .62 funding that goes towards many infrastructure needs. So, I might be mistaken, but the .58 would be less than that. I just imagine it probably just takes a little, a little bit longer to get to all of those projects if somebody wants to correct me where I'm wrong, but I've seen what the projects are from utility support. So, just putting that out there. We'll now go to Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll see if I can't take a stab at this. Actually, I have not decided how I'm going to vote on this yet because I am torn between the increase in the CIP and the Vision Fund. So, I'm still going through that process of deciding, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things on the CIP since I'm the chair of that committee. What I want to make sure everybody understands, all the projects are planned out for five years and if there is an additional funding put into it, those projects that are extended out into two-year, two-year two, three and four, those will be moved up if we agree to this additional three, 3.3 million or almost 3.4 million into the CIP. So, as far as infill goes, the primary driver with the CIP is, is the water main lines. If they break, they usually get a higher priority just because the streets have to be torn up and everything has to be gone through to get a new water line in there. So, that's when the new street or street rehabilitation takes place. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that it isn't just like the TIFs where we do outside the city limits or on the edges of the city limits, then annex that area in and then so we can get a TIF going. So, that's totally different from what's going on with this CIP. So, again, I'm very torn between taking away from the Vision Fund and I haven't decided yet how I'm going to vote on this. So, I'm going to see if I can't get some more input from the other council members, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understands how the CIP works and what processes we use for selecting priorities on the CIP.
Alderwoman Scott, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since I don't see anybody else in the queue, I'd like to pose that I'd like to hear from other council members that haven't spoke, whether they're at least, if nothing else, in support of directing staff to come back with a recommended, recommended or recommended draft of this reallocation of these two pennies. But again, and I know it sounds like a broken record, but since Alderman Nordstrom brought up the monies and how he was having some heartburn over the Vision Fund, let me go over the numbers again because it's really not that drastic. If we're going to reallocate in 2016, because we're currently in 2017, so the, you know, jury's out on where we're going to settle on sales tax for this year, but in 2016, the general fund took in $27 million. The CIP Fund took in 13.5. The Vision Fund took in 13.5. The mayor's proposal for 2018, if we change the ordinance, because I also, I thought I heard one of our council members say, well, I could support it for this year, but I don't know. No, we have to change the ordinance, so it's going to be forever if we change this or until we change the ordinance again. So, for 2018, the mayor was proposing the reallocation so that the general fund would get 28.4. Now, that's only up $1.4 million from 2016, 28.4 over 27 in 2016. The CIP Fund would go from 13.5 to roughly 16.5, which is about a $3 million increase. And the Vision Fund would only decrease from roughly 13.5 down to 11.9 or almost 12 million. So, the reshuffling is not like we're gutting the Vision Fund. We are not gutting the Vision Fund. It's just reshuffling to see if we could take care of some other priorities. And like I said, let me be clear, let me be frank, if I haven't made myself clear. I would support this reallocation if we could earmark it towards, you know, letting the mayor and staff know, we're more interested in kind of splitting up the projects instead of concentrating on expansion of making sure that, yes, we have growth, but I would like to see some of that infill. And if we earmark it, I think that would give the direction for staff that they would know how much money they've got to kind of work on, trying to work on some of those projects and reshuffle the priority list. And great, I see a whole bunch of lights in the queue. I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Ask, can you show, receive? Councilwoman Becky Drew, you have the floor.
Thank you. As I'm looking through these numbers, when you add the .16 utility fund with the .46 CIP Fund, that's .62, but when you come over to the proposed 2018 allocation, it's .58. So, really, the only thing that's increasing here, if I'm understanding this correctly, is the general fund. Because if you add the utility fund and the CIP Fund together, it's not a, you know, some of that money is drifting up to the general fund. It's not staying with the CIP unless somebody can correct me on that. Thank you.
We're going to go to the Finance Officer Polly Insomnion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For clarification purposes, something that, you can't just add the .16 and the .46 to get the .62 because a lot of the .16 is going into water and sewer projects. So, you're not really comparing apples to apples. Those projects will still happen, but they will be funded through their enterprise funds instead of through this utility support fund. That fund was really used for more of the expansion of water and sewer lines originally and then streets got brought in back in 2009. So, that was something new that was added to the fund. But, so you can't just say the .62 is actually decreasing because it's not set in stone how much goes to streets versus water versus sewer out of that .16 fund. So, it's a little, just a little more complicated.
Thank you for that clarification. I know I brought that up as well and that's good. The question on the floor from Alderwoman Scott, just want to present that out there as, for the next speakers. What direction do you want to go? Stick with what we're doing or do you want to go towards the mayor's proposed allocation? We'd like to kind of get some direction and have some fruit from this discussion. We're going to go to Alderman Roberts. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think this is a good start. I really do. I think we're going in the right direction. I would like, like Mr. Laurenti, to see more come out of the Vision Fund and go into infrastructure, into streets, water and sewer. You know, it kind of worries me when we start talking about how we're going to limit growth in Rapid City. I think there's ways to do it, you know, and I think there's ways to incentivize growth, other ways than we're doing right now. But, you know, if we just start looking at infrastructure projects and not growth on the outside of town, we're going to limit growth so much, people are going to stop coming here. So, we've got to be very careful about what we do and how we do our growth in Rapid City. But I do believe this is a good start. If anybody would like to add a little more of the Vision Funds, I would definitely support it. But I will support this for now. Like I said, I think it's a good start, but I think we have a long way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Laurenti, you have the floor, sir. Do you want to talk again? You're in the queue. I know you've got some words.
Well, Richie, I was...
Well, Richie, I was not buzzed in, but Richie Nordstrom, have you spoke yet?
Yes.
Okay, then. I don't, I'm not going to give you any leeway then. But I do have some more to say, and I appreciate you calling on me even though I wasn't buzzed in. But I think, I think the majority, I honestly believe we need a motion. I think we can hammer out the details. But I think we need a motion. I think we need to let the people know, this is a great time to let the taxpayers know that we're very serious about infrastructure. And I am for putting stipulations on the increases on rehabilitation. We can further define that. In my opinion, it's on the lowest graded streets where we know we have most likely the oldest sewer lines and that type of thing. But we need to start accelerating the rehabilitation of our worst streets in town. And they've done a grading system multiple times, the city has. So I think they have a firm grip of the areas and the streets that need to be done. We need to make sure that it happens that way. And they can provide that list of the streets. We've had that before on previous councils. I know for a fact, I've seen it. So it does exist, the specific streets and their grades. So I believe we need to move forward with a motion, and I would support a second. I would support a second on an additional increase from Vision, given the fact that the current reallocation still allows for $12 million. In my opinion, we ought to at least increase CIP by another million dollars, still leaving $11 million for Vision, other Vision Fund projects. That's extremely healthy. I don't know any, I do not understand why anybody would be concerned about the health of the Vision Fund, knowing that it continues to grow, as we all know. I've been here since 2008. Vision and CIP have continued to grow because our revenues have continued to grow. That's another subject we're going to be talking about in the near future, and you all know that. You've seen it. Our revenues have grown $23 million over the last 10 years. $23 million. And we're, some of us are iffy about wanting to increase infrastructure spending by 2.3 million rather than 1.1 or 2.2 rather than 1.1. That just doesn't, that falls dead in my eyes. It does not make any sense. It doesn't add up. And I'm hoping my colleagues will support it as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, looking for some direction for staff, which way to go. Now Alderman Nordstrom, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll pull the trigger and let's make the motion to do the proposed 2018 allocation.
Point of order. Can we, point of order.
Yes.
Can we make motions? And this is just, okay, this is not just a working session, so we can make a motion. Okay. Mr. Chair.
Yep. Is that, continue on. In other words, just making the motion to comply with or follow the mayor's direction or guidance that he has given us for one penny for the general fund, .58 for the CIP and .42 for the Vision Fund. Yeah, have the staff create an ordinance, yes.
So to clarify, direct staff.
Direct staff to create an ordinance.
To create an ordinance.
Yep.
To allocate the mayor's proposed 2018 allocation.
Yes.
$1 to the general fund, .58 to CIP and .42 to Vision.
That's my question.
We have a motion by Nordstrom, a second by Laurenti.
If I may.
Yep, go ahead.
Just a, just a minor clarification. If I need some help with the math, Pauline, to make up the $1.1 million, and I understand it's not much of a degrees in the bigger scope of things. How long would it take, based on our recent history, to make up that $1.1 million? How many years? Three years? About roughly, that's close enough. That's all I need. I'll yield.
Motion is on the floor. All in favor?
No.
Oh, excuse me. We have people in the queue. Excuse me. We are going, we're going to Alderman Roberts. You have the floor.
I sure am glad you do that because I'd like to make a substitute motion to change the reallocation to .38 for the Vision Fund and .62 for the CIP Fund. Thank you.
So we have a substitute motion and a second by Laurenti to readjust $1 to the general fund, .62 to the CIP and .38 to Vision. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And forgive me just one second if I can hold the floor for a minute.
Yes, sir.
Basically, that reallocates about another million into the CIP Fund. So it's only taking about a million out of the Vision Fund. But that will give us a couple, couple million extra. And when this comes back, I would have absolutely no problem when it comes through CIP about talking about doing some kind of an allocation for the most needed streets to be first on this list in the next five-year plan, which I think would be a good thing to discuss. Thank you.
Okay. Now go to Alderman Lewis. You're going to have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess in this motion, I'm not going to support it. I wasn't going to support the previous motion just because I think it's once again something the city, as the citizens have spoken a couple of different times now and said they want to keep it. And I'm completely comfortable with the .46. .42 is a little, I mean, it's a million five, whatever, I guess. If I have to live with it, I will, but I'd rather not cut that fund anymore than we have to just because it's just something the citizens have spoken about and to go, .38, I think it's just, I think you're just being mean. But just kidding. But it's, I think it's just a little drastic, a little high on the cut list. And I think we need to be, you know, we still have to realize there's other parts of this town that we live here for reasons that are not just because we have perfect streets. We want perfect streets. We have all these wonderful projects we've done. I realize they cost money, but that's, you know, part of the, part of the pact we made with the citizens here. And I think we need to protect that and continue to develop our quality of life. I'm not by any means saying we don't need to fix the streets because obviously we do. And I think we're doing a good job of adding a significant amount of money to that. But I think at this point, I still want to protect the Vision Fund as much as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Go to Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in listening to the, to the two proposals tonight, I'm more in favor of supporting the first one, the original one, which is the allocation presented by the mayor. And the reason I say that is because the motion on the floor is to direct staff to bring back an ordinance change draft. Then we can, I mean, we've got time to visit each other in small groups and, you know, kind of argue our points, why it should be increased or decreased. But we can actually set those amounts when we actually go over the ordinance itself. And I know that the mayor had presented this reallocation. So tonight, if we're going to direct staff, I would be more inclined to support the reallocation based on what the mayor presented. Let's hash out, in my opinion, whether we want to go more or less when the actual ordinance comes before us because I will be looking for that earmark of trying to give that clear direction of separation of rehabilitation and growth. And just for the record, Alderman Roberts, you didn't say this, but I just want to be clear. I wasn't trying to kill growth. I'm just trying to reallocate some funds for rehabilitation rather than all of it going towards growth. So I'm in favor of growth as well, but I think it needs to be controlled. And I think we've had a huge amount over the last few years. So I will be supporting the first one. I won't be supporting the current allocation. I think we can hash that out later. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Now go to Alderwoman Drew.
All right. Yes, I'm just going to echo what Amanda said. I can support the first proposed reallocation. And for us to say it's only a million dollars is a little bit glib. So I think that, that we really need to take some time and think before we just switch a million dollars here and a million dollars there. It just seems a little bit not in, I don't know, it doesn't seem like people from Rapid City would think that way. And I want to support the people from Rapid City that really want to see the original intent of this money. But for now, I can see moving just a bit of it over to the CIP funds and streets. That's all I can do right now.
Okay. Thank you. Now go to Alderman Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just want to make this clear for my friend, Mr. Lewis, that I'm not being mean. You know, almost 10 years ago, when I first ran for this, this seat, I made a promise to my constituents that I would do what I can to get roads fixed 10 years ago. And we've done a little. And we have had some really good projects. And we've had some projects for growth that I think haven't been the best ways we've spent money. So I think that we need to look at how our growth is. I agree with Amanda there. I agree with the council there. But we need more money. Everybody's saying every year, every year, we need more money. We need more money. But nobody wants to touch the only pot of money that we have without going out and increasing taxes. Now, I know there's quite a few of you that have no problem increasing taxes, but I do. I've got a lot of people in my ward and Amanda's ward that are on fixed incomes, veterans, below the poverty level. You know, you look at the affordable housing that's being built in Rapid. Where's it being built? Most of it's in North Rapid. Why? Because we need it. And I, when we have the money, you know, look at the Vision Fund projects we've done in the last few years. We've done some good ones. But we've also given half a million dollars to the School of Mines, which is another taxing entity. We're giving taxpayers money to another taxing entity. It doesn't make a lot of sense when we have roads that need to be fixed. Anyway, thank you.
All right, Mr. Roberts, thank you. And now go to Alderman Laurenti, unless you did not chime in this time. Says you did.
I did buzz in this time. Chair, I appreciate that. And the extra ones as well, I appreciate those. I do agree with Alderman Roberts, and I think what we need to think about y'all is that we, as some of you've already expressed, is that we have some time to hammer this out. We're going to have two readings. So in my opinion, .62 to CIP and .38 to Vision tightens it up. It gives us more control, not less control, because some of that was going to the general fund. We have a lot, we can't put controls on that. But we can in CIP. We can in Vision. And that's why I supported this. It gives us the ability to have greater control of where these funds go. As you said, Alderwoman Scott, you wanted to make sure that this got into rehab. Well, let's make sure that we maximize that because we can't control the amount that the previous reallocation that was going to go into the general fund. We can't, we know we can't put any controls on that. But we can on Vision and CIP. If we reallocate it as is proposed right now, we can put more towards rehabilitation. We can have greater control. We can put all the stipulations we need, and it's a starting point. This is not the end-all, be-all motion. We have two readings yet. Let's move forward with the proposal, and then we'll hammer out the details. I mean, honestly, this is not, we're not even to a first reading. We're just directing staff to come back with .62 and .38. And I want us to have more control. As y'all know, if it goes into the general fund, we're not going to control that. So think about that, and then we'll hammer out the details. Thank you.
All right. Out Alderman Lewis.
I realize, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I realize at this point we're down to the philosophical question whether or not you want to do this or not. So I'm not going to go into that point of it. I do want to make one point, though, and that is something that gets set up here all the time, and it gets out into the public, and it comes in the paper, and everybody just, you know, freaks out because they said, they're going to raise our taxes if they don't get the money they need. We can't raise your taxes, folks. We are bound by law. We can only raise them two ways. One, by growth, which we have very actual, we can only make policy to help stimulate growth so that taxes go up by growth or by taking the Consumer Price Index, which is, and we're at 3% or the Consumer Price Index, whichever is less. In this case, I believe the proposed one for this year, if we do take it's 1%. So we can't go out there and raise your property taxes. We can't do it, folks. It's not something we're even empowered to do. So please, if you put anything in the paper tomorrow or in the news or whatever, the internet, the interweb, please, we can't raise your taxes and we won't. All we can take is a CPI, which is a 1% increase total. So please don't go out and scare the public with that stuff because it's not true. I'm not going to raise your taxes because I can't. And I wouldn't anyway, but aside the point.
Thank you. Now Alderwoman Drew.
Thank you. I think I'd talk to a different constituency somehow. But the millennials and the younger people that I do visit with, they say, go ahead. I'll pay for those roads. I raise my taxes. I'll pay for the cultural things. They do. I know you're, yeah, okay. You're looking at me like I'm nuts. But I have heard from them. They said, I will pay for this stuff. And I know that that's not everyone in this city. But there are people that just want the things, the amenities, and they don't want them cut. And they'll say, look, I'll pay for it. And so, yes, like Alderman Lewis said, we can't raise anybody's taxes. But there's people out there that really are not afraid of an extra $2 or $3 a year. You know, they're okay with that. And so if we're going to just raise them a little bit, I think that there's people out there that we can still reach out to that, that want to see this town grow in a different way. They've, I've had calls. I don't know how many taxpayers you talked to a year, Steve. I don't know how many taxpayers you've talked to a year, John. But some of the people that I'm talking to would rather see the forward motion of this community instead of just always cutting and cutting and cutting.
I love this spirited debate. Mr. Roberts, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. I talk to taxpayers every day. As a Realtor, I've yet to have one person say when they're buying a new house, why don't you raise my taxes tomorrow? So anyway, I, I do not talk to people. I have talked to one person in six years that said, I'm okay with you raising my taxes. Now whoever's happy with that, give me a call tomorrow. I'd love to hear from you. But I have not heard other than one person in six years. I have not heard it. So anyway, thank you.
All right. So the, on the floor, this motion's actually not about raising taxes at all. We're talking about the substitute motion, excuse me, for the general fund as proposed by Alderman Roberts. So the queue is empty. Let's take a vote on the substitute motion. $1 to the general fund, .62 to CIP, .38 to Vision. Roberts and Laurenti seconded. So all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
We get a roll call, please.
Lewis. Solomon.
No.
Modrick.
No.
Nordstrom.
No.
Drew.
No.
Scott.
No.
Roberts.
Yes.
Drew.
Yes.
Laurenti.
Yes.
Armstrong.
No.
327. Motion.
Thank you. Now we're going to the previous motion. And the previous motion was the proposal from the mayor for the, oh, excuse me, I didn't see Amanda Scott. Amanda Scott, you have the floor, ma'am. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to reiterate again that this is just directing staff to bring back, and we can discuss the allocation, actual allocation for the two readings. So this, this is just to get the draft motion in my mind to come back with some starting numbers. Thank you.
All right. So the motion's to direct staff on the proposal from the mayor. Dollar towards the general fund, .58 to CIP, .42 to Vision. And with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. One opposed from Lewis?
Can I ask who seconded that main motion?
What's that?
Who was the second on the main?
Laurenti was the second on that one as well.
Okay.
Okay. That was a good discussion for the audience here. I know some of you are here for other items we probably won't get to this evening, maybe till Thursday night. We're going to continue on to the CIP policy for now. If any aldermen present have any comments on item two. Alderwoman Scott, thank you, ma'am.
Sir, I was a little fast on that. I would bow out to anybody else if they want to take the lead. Okay. I see you, Mayor. Okay. So I will ask the mayor a question. So Mayor, you did provide a draft change in the capital improvement policy. What I was going to say is part of our discussion of the reallocation of the taxes is that maybe the concentration of rehabilitation versus new or what other classification of streets and stuff may be handled in this draft policy. Or I guess my question to you is, is you provided this draft policy, but the reallocation of the two pennies affects the Vision Fund and the CIP as well as the general fund. Do you plan on having an ordinance change for all three? Or is it going to be one ordinance change the staff is going to bring back?
Well, I believe the one ordinance change, just articulating the allocation of the sales tax would be all that's necessary. I would caution the council of making any policy decisions on which roads could be fixed without having the input of Dale Tech because the priority list that you're speaking of may already exist. So you should really listen to him. I know that he's got important information to share on that.
And I, thank you, Mayor. I think that was the comments of the council members up here is that their Public Works does already have a list, and they do keep it prioritized. So it's a matter of just looking at So, it's a matter of just looking at the list from Public Works.
Right, and then this, this is like a, this is like a one, two, three punch here with what you just voted on, the allocation of the sales tax. That has immediate benefits that will increase by a known amount over the next two years, plus growth of that CIP fund would increase year to year presumably, when sales tax goes up as well. But then also, as part of a longer-term plan, the, the capital improvement policy is needed to protect your funding source, the CIP. The CIP has become heavily altered over year, over the years, on what it's used for and who has access to it. And that's why it's become largely ineffective in meeting the needs of, our infrastructure needs in Rapid City. So, there's the percent, the dollar amounts that would apply, the type of projects and so on, have been addressed in this policy provided by Pauline Sumption. But what's important to know that on the long-term plan, the, a healthier general fund is related to healthier streets and roads. Our street department is in the general fund. We now have things that should be funded out of the general fund, they're being funded out of CIP, and we're at the very beginning of a longer-term plan to wean those departments, those particular general fund purchases, out of CIP, to free up that money as well for streets and roads. So this can't be done overnight without the infusion of a bunch of money to get it all squared away. So, we're looking at it in a, in a multi-year turnaround. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor. And just going back to my comments, and then I'll yield to the other, my peers up here, is that in here, I'm not so sure with basically what staff is gonna be bringing back on the reallocation of the two pennies, as the council discussed tonight, but with this, within this policy of specifically the CIP, we may be able to, to have language in here that would also help clarify that rehabilitation versus new versus combined projects of what, you know. The mayor's done a good job of trying to reallocate this. I'm just saying, there might be a division of the lines to address that, that rehabilitation. It might be handled in this policy rather than the other one. So, basically, since the mayor's already handed us a draft policy, I would welcome any comments from the city council to, if nothing else, let staff know that when they're reviewing the draft for the reallocation of the two pennies, they may want to have this one side by side to see where the language would best fit, based on the intention of the city council members. Thank you, I'll yield.
All right, thank you. We go to Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I seem to have misplaced my polit, uh, can I borrow yours? Yeah, thank you. I would like to see the mayor go ahead and, and take this off a draft form and actually put it in final form. I, I know we're not asking for a, an ordinance change, but it's just primarily policy changes. So, what the mayor's presented so far, what I can tell is I can support that policy changes. So, I would encourage my colleagues to support the draft changes. I would just wanna point out, the, for me, the, the largest interest that I have is that, as the mayor said in his presentation, that we were starting to train people to come up to CIP for any and everything, a project that wasn't on the list, and that's a major concern for me, being on the CIP. I'd like to help out the people as much as possible, but one of the things, a major change is gonna be the $50,000 limit rather than the $15,000 limit, threshold, excuse me. So that when we, we start seeing these capital projects coming our direction and requests coming of it, they have to reach that 50,000 threshold. So, that's the most important part for me. And then, I'm just looking forward to, to get this finalized and start moving forward with it. If it becomes a policy, that means to me is that as soon as it becomes in the final form, then we start it right, right away, rather than waiting for 2018. Am I correct on that, that assumption? If we assume the policy in final form, it goes into the CIP now versus 2018?
It very well possibly could. There's nothing that says that it has to start with the reallocation, because it, it spells out what happens in 2018, 19 and 20, but you could still adopt the rest of it as soon as it's in final form, if you chose to as a council.
Thank you. I, I just want, yeah, thank you for the clarification. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair. So, I see no one else in the queue, so really what we're talking about is maybe having the mayor put this in final form for it to come before council. I don't think there's anything that we need to do on this, so we'll move on to the next item. Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only caution I would give is, I know they're not tied, but I'm not sure staff may not want to take a look, and, and if this might be a better, in this policy might be a better place to address the rehabilitation of the streets rather than the reallocation. So, I would, they don't have to come hand in hand, but I think some time needs to be given to allow staff to review to see if this is the better policy to put that intention of the council in, rather than the ordinance draft or the reallocation. So, I understand where Alderman Nordstrom's going from, but again, like he said, we don't necessarily have to wait till January 1st of 2018, but we don't have to do it tomorrow either. So, a little bit of time might be warranted. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, move on to, by the way, we'd like to wrap up here at 6:45 for a 7 o'clock city council meeting, just for everybody's reference. Next, we're moving to a discussion of interdepartmental charges and pilts. Would anybody like to kick off this discussion? Going once. Alderwoman Scott, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If nothing else, I'd just like to summarize the discussion that we had a week ago, when we were kind of talking about interdepartmental charges. Again, I commend Sean and the mayor and the mayor's staff in the reevaluation of the central cost reallocation for the interdepartmental charges, because now there's method to the madness of what enterprise funds are being charged for those services. The, and that covered, as Sean had indicated, about $2 million. Well, our interdepartmental charges are $5 million, so that still means that there's $3 million being allocated out to enterprise funds. And the only thing I'm not comfortable with is I can't frankly say to any of those enterprise funds, "Yes, you're being charged correctly. Yes, you're being overcharged. Yes, you're being undercharged." The problem I have with those three sta, I can't stand by any single one of those statements. So, I would just encourage, I understand the revenue stream is there, we're kinda coming up against a deadline for passing the budget, there's not enough time to reevaluate and get a mythology in place that makes sense to validate the charges that the enterprise funds are having for the rest of the charges, but I would encourage for the 2019, please, let's at least be able to stand up in front of everybody and have a reasonable explanation of why these enterprise funds are contributing to the general fund for the services and what services they're getting provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Now go to Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that, I mean, I, I do echo some of what Alderwoman Scott is saying there, but I think we, I just wanna remind everybody, I think that's something we need to get on our docket as soon as possible. I mean, very soon. Doesn't have to be done during this budget cycle, it could. I would, I would definitely second a motion to, to direct the attorney's office to come back with a plan to start their billing process and software. You heard him say just the other night, they already have the software. I would support a second to start doing that, and that's what Alderwoman Scott is talking about, is some accountability and being able to say, "Are you being undercharged or overcharged?" The only way to know that is to, to measure, measure what their hours are worth, and so that when they bill these individual departments for interdepartmental charges, it's accurate. It's, it's much more accurate than it is today. In fact, today, we don't know. We have no idea. And I think we need to do that right away, and I believe there are other departments that can start doing it, even short-term, just to get an evaluation of their time and what it's worth, so that they can apply that to their interdepartmental charges as well. It's not just the attorney's office, as Alderwoman Scott was talking about, it's millions of dollars. And so, the attorney's office is just a, what, I, I, off the top of my head, 20% of that? I don't even know. I, I can't remember, it was like 400,000 or 500,000, if I remember. Here we go again, my ballpark figures, but that doesn't matter. The reality is, is that we need to get more accountability on these interdepartmental charges. This is not something painful for government to do. It's not. This isn't micromanaging. This is making sure that this budget reflects a reality, and that's, that is our job. So, I just wanted to make sure that as those agenda items come forward, that we all support it and get it crafted as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is the discussion of property tax evaluation. Certainly entertain any kickoff discussion on that. Thank you, Alderman Laurenti.
Chair, can you frame this? Did you have some feel for where, when you wrote this down as an agenda item, what was the thought?
This is basically an outline following the mayor's budget presentation. So, any items that you'd have regarding, regarding that, I believe he had brought this up in his presentation, so.
And that specifically?
Yeah.
'Cause what I don't see on here is the property tax increase, the CPI, whether we're gonna take it or not. Seems to me that would be a big conversation piece, and it, it bothers me a little bit that it's not on here. So, if that's part of the property tax evaluation discussion, we need to have that, because we're all gonna have to vote on that as a separate item when we pass this budget. We're gonna have to vote, yea or nay, whether we want to increase property taxes, and that's exactly what we're doing when we take the CPI. If anybody is questioning that, I heard some people say, "We're, we don't have the power to increase their property taxes." Please ask the finance officer what taking the CPI does to the property taxes, to our taxpayers in Rapid City. And on top of that, also take into account that if this CPI, property tax increases, were referred to a ballot, what do you think the taxpayers would say about us taking a property tax increase this year? Just think about that. Not your own beliefs, 'cause you're here representing all of the people of Rapid City. Let me tell you how that vote would go down, because some of that has already been done when they tried to increase levels of property tax at the county level. If y'all remember how that vote went, that's exactly how it would go down in Rapid City proper. So, we are, and it is in this budget, to take a property tax increase. I don't care what the amount is. And you're going to hear, ladies and gentlemen, the belittling of the amount. This is what government does. It's only $3 per $100,000 of eval, of, of valuation, or it's only. But the reality is, we do this time and time and time again, and these increases are in perpetuity. They're not just for this next, next budget year, they are forever. So when we increase taxes by $160,000, which is what is proposed in this budget, that is $1.6 million to the taxpayers over the next 10 years. That is $3.2 million to the taxpayers over the next 20 years, on top of all of the taxes they're already paying, and discounting any other increases that the government takes in that 10 and 20 years. What do you think the taxpayers would say to that? And here we are, and you're going to hear it. Well, that's to cover growth. Well, let's talk about growth a little bit. And I, I already alluded to this a little bit already. 2006, our property taxes and our sales tax from 2006 to 2016 grew by over $23 million, and yet we are still spending out of undesignated cash by, what, 2? I forget what it is this year. $1.3 million? Even though, on the average, since 2006, this city government has seen increases in its income, which is tax revenues, taking, taken from all the taxpayers, because this government doesn't make money, they just, they're takers. $2.3 million, a little more than $2.3 million per year in growth in income. So let me, I'm gonna put it for my colleagues, just so that you understand, and so that some of the people out there who are watching right now. You work for an employer for the last nine years, or 10 years, your employer has been giving you, on the average, a 4.5% increase in income, every year. On the average, 4.5% increase in income. What person out there, anywhere in this universe, that's considered a human being, would think that that was not an unbelievable increase in our income? 4.5% every year. Think about your citizens in your ward. How many of the people in your ward have received an income increase of 4.5% every year for the last 10 years? Think about that. And now this year, because you're, and you've heard from your boss, that you're only gonna get about 2% this year, 'cause that's, we're a little over 2% with our increase over last year in, in property taxes and, and, and sales tax. And you, and you're gonna go into your employer and say, "You know what? That 2% is not good enough." 'Cause I'm used to getting, on the average, I've measured it, I'm used to getting 4.5% every year. 2% is not enough. So, I want more than that. What do you think your employer's going to say to you? What will your employer say to you, if you still have a job, that is? And that's what we're telling the taxpayers, because the taxpayers are our boss. And so, if we all know that our boss would vote this down like 3 to 1, and that's not an exaggeration, if anybody wants to, to say, "No way, Steve, they'd pass this tax increase." There's no way that would happen, and we are getting increased revenues every year. It's not that government's not getting enough, it's that it will never have enough. $2.3 million in growth every year for the last 10 years, and yet we, in this budget, are saying, "We want a greater portion of that tax. We want a greater portion of your income, people." Think about that. Before you vote on that resolution to take that CPI, I yield.
All right, we go to Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I know that our city council meetings get great coverage from the media, both print and radio and television, and they get, you know, they stream this, or they take it live, and they take sound bites and stuff, and inevitably, it ends up on the first page when we talk about property taxes or sales tax or increasing anything, that the city did it. So I'd like to start by just reminding every property owner out there, when you take a look at your tax bill, roughly 50% of the taxes you're paying are for the schools. 30% roughly is for the county, and the city is 20% of that tax bill. Now, I'm not saying it's a paltry amount, like Alderman Laurenti alluded to. I'm not saying it's paltry. But I do want the citizens to know that when you see the, the, the front-page lines on the newspaper or hear it on the news, that the city's gonna raise your taxes again, you get the tax bill, and you had a 19% increase in your valuation, which is totally different than your tax bill, but you get your tax bill and you have a 7% increase. The 7% increase was not the city of Rapid City. The city may have been part of it, but it was not the whole city. So, just wanted to start the discussion with that. Now, if we could talk dollars, now that I've talked percentages, Mr. Chair, may I ask the chief financial officer a couple questions?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, Pauline, as Alderman Laurenti alluded to, in the 2018 budget that the mayor presented, it includes TIF money and growth that comes back onto the rolls, or that was new construction. Do you have the numbers separated from growth versus the TIF versus the CIP that the mayor included in the budget?
The growth amount equates to about $485,000. TID 71, which was not included in the calculation that was given to us by the county, because it was not dissolved as of yet, that's about $76,000, and CPI is about 1.61.
Thank you. So, in the increase for the property tax, basically, the state of South Dakota says, as has been stated up here, that the city can take the CPI or 3%, whichever's less. And what that amounts to is, is whatever, and Pauline, I'm asking you to correct me if I'm wrong. The way I understand it is, when we take a look at that CPI, and you said it was 1%? So, 1% increase, that means that the total taxable revenue that the city collected last year can increase by 1%. That does not include growth, does not include the TID coming back online.
That is correct.
So, it's just the calculation overall, and then based whether the property's agricultural, park, residential, commercial, industrial, whatever it is, that, that's where those different valuations come in to the actual individual tax bill.
Correct. That, and where, where their actual valuation is.
Right. On the end, yeah, valuation and the classification and the mill levy that's attributed to that is really complicated. is really complicated.
Correct. The city's mill levy and the county's mill levy is the same, no matter what kind of property it is, where there's a difference between like owner occupied versus not, is in the school district levy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. So, because I knew it was complicated, and you have to kind of work through all the mill levies and stuff. And it's kind of hard, because not all the information, this is kind of for the county, not all the information is contained in one spot. You have to kind of dig your way through the assessed value versus the state valuation versus the real valuation versus the taxable amount versus your taxes. So, if you ever want to look at it, not, not directing people to my Facebook, but I did chase it down here a year ago, and I posted it. So, if you want to go back and really bore yourself to death, you can go read my page, because I kind of walked it all the way through. So, just wanted my colleagues to, to recognize that, that as Alderman Laurenti indicated, it really does come down to a philosophical, you know, where's your gut and where do you feel on this? Because the CPI is, the city councils, I think back in early 2012, voted that they would specifically, as a city council, pass a resolution of intent to take the CPI. In other words, make the big splash in the news. Yes, we're going to take the CPI. So, that is a separate vote that the city council has to make before we can pass the second reading of the appropriation. So, it can happen before the first reading, but it definitely has to happen before the second reading, or the city council does not take the CPI. That's basically what that is there for. But as Pauline indicated, just to wrap this up a little bit, is that the growth that is going back onto our tax rolls in 2018 from just new construction, and I, I don't know if anybody else has been paying attention, but like I said, Rapid City's growing. We've had huge building permits, and we've got $485,000 in taxes coming back onto the cities for growth. So, that's our growth, and that's quite large compared to the 161. So, thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Just as a reminder to the council, Hart stopped at 6:45, so we can reset for the city council meeting coming up, so please keep these next comments brief. Go to Alderman Louis.
I see how it is. Okay, so, I appreciate everyone's comments. I guess my point about the CPI, and this is something that, actually, we'll start with the growth of the budget. The budget grows this time, as I understand it, listening to the mayor talk and talk to other people, most of our growth is based upon contracts we have with employee, or with different departments. We're obligated to increase their wages a certain level, and maybe I'm incorrect in that, but I think, I believe that's, as I understand, so that it counts for most of the increase in the budget this year. The CPI is something that was developed a long time ago for people to realize that the costs go up, of the cost of goods and services do increase. The cost of the gas in your car, the cost of the city's cars, gases go up, they have to replace tires, they have to do all kinds of things. It's inflationary index, folks. So, it's just, honestly, my personal opinion is that it's, it doesn't make sense as a government to, to go out and, and try to budget less every year if we don't take the CPI. It's 1%. I know that's, well, it equates to $160,000, I guess, but that's citywide, and it just helps ensure that we're staying at least keeping up with inflation. Otherwise, we're doing negative budgeting, and we're not keeping up with our, not being responsible, and we're going to, you guys want the same cost in, goods and services for the, for less money, basically. So, by taking the CPI, we're just ensuring that you continue to get what you currently have. It's not an attempt to raise your taxes nearly willingly just because we can, because we're not doing it just because we can. I assure you, that's, that's not why I do it. I don't feel that powerful up here. I do it because I think it's a responsible thing to do, and I'm trying to be responsible for the city as a whole. I fully understand the arguments, we don't, we need to fight against raising taxes, and, you know, people need to protect their money, and we used to be good stewards, but I think being a good, part of being a good steward is being honest, and I think the mayor's done a good job of doing that this year. He's been very honest with some of the things he's proposed, whether or not I agree with every one of them, and take a lot of guts, and he's being honest about the compensation problem we have right now. It's not a problem if you're on the other end of it, of course, but from a budgetary process, it's kind of a problem. It's not saying they don't deserve their money, you don't get that, don't put that in the paper, please. I'm just saying it's something we have to deal with, and something we, you know, we have to, it's a responsibility we have up here. So, we're not raising your taxes really, because we're not. It's not something we're going to go out and change. We can't do it. This is just an inflationary hedge. Thank you.
Alderman Nordstrom, can you make your point quickly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do. I do, I can. And for me, it, it boils down to the police department is 15.5 million for their expenses, and our property tax collection is roughly 15.6. It's a wash. So, whatever services or people wanting to talk about taxes, that's primarily where it goes. If you want less law enforcement, that's what's going to happen if we take away the, the taxes or the CPI from that. So, I'm very concerned about not having good police enforcement. We got there, let's stay there.
Finally, Alderman, Alderwoman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to make a motion to reconvene Thursday at 5:30.
All right, the motion is to reconvene Thursday at 5:30. Remainder? Yes, ma'am.
And just the caveat of starting with item number four.
Item four.
Just to continue it, yeah, just to finish it, since we're running a little short, and then I would also just offer up that I'm, I'm hoping we can actually get to finishing out the discussion points and actually getting to making some amendments, making some tweaks, and actually getting this budget passed on Thursday night.
Yes, absolutely, and also getting to the discussion of the proposed budget cuts as well. I think that'll be good for the folks who want to speak. So, with that, motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned.